I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Dear only Father, Lord God, we come saying thank you, Lord. Lord, as our students have embarked on a new journey this school year, continue to keep our teachers, our staff, and our students safe, continue to cover our police and our fire, in the name of Jesus, Amen.
Roll call.
Alexander. Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Zalinas.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Racos.
Here. We got nine present, one electronically, eight in chambers. Mayor's address. Hello, Mayor.
Hi, I didn't know if you were gonna do a moment of silence. Never mind. Nice to see you all. Mayor's address for the 12th of August. We started off with breakfast at the wheel with the developer. This is a summary over my last two weeks, as I usually give. Breakfast at the wheel with the developer, interested in investing in Hammond, particularly in data centers in Hammond. Met with Midsco representatives also about data centers, along with leadership of the Digital Crossroads Data Center and Hammond's Economic Development Team regarding future power needs for the Hammond Data Center complex. These data centers are big megawatt users, and the type of power generation that needs to be adjacent to these complexes is very large. It's almost similar to what we use for steel mills, believe it or not. Also met with representatives from Gateway Hammond Recovery Center about their plans to expand their footprint within the city of Hammond. They help women that are struggling with alcoholism and substance abuse problems. Met with Councilwoman Janet Vines regarding multiple issues across the city. It's a pretty regular meeting we have. Met with Carmen from Hammond Housing regarding potential litigation against Hammond Housing and possibly against the city of Hammond, injury to a tenant in one of her buildings. We had it on tape, which will mitigate any future litigation should any arise. Met with Chancellor Chris Hallford and Matt Wells from One Region, PNW Chancellor Chris Hallford and Matt Wells regarding the footprint for PNW's Impact Lab that will be located in the second district in downtown Hammond. I got more on that in a second. They're very excited, Purdue's very excited about that Impact Lab. Participated in Hammond's annual Wham midnight bike ride. I want to thank the council people that participate every year, you know, Councilman Spatelli, Councilwoman Vines always have a stop on there. It's a 30-mile course, perfect weather, so it was a great night. So, thank you to everybody that worked so hard, put on Wham, including all the police officers that were guarding the course. Had a welcome party for Hammond's new chief of staff, Scott Miller. Good to see you, Scott. Scott's here. He's been on the job since August 5th. We had a welcome party in our office for everybody that works in City Hall to come by and introduce themselves. Did our normal standing meeting with the Hammond Police Department with our monthly captains meeting. Met with all the captains and chiefs from the Hammond Police Department regarding crime stats, trends, and personnel issues. Met with Leopardo Energy. They're the ones that did all of our energy efficiency programs across the city of Hammond, or particularly in City Hall, about a project that they want to do at the Hammond Sanitary District regarding a solar plant that'll make the plant more energy efficient and will save us all a lot of money, so that's good news. Attended Hammond's annual National Night Out. I want to thank everybody that worked hard. Also, a lot of police officers, first responders out there. I know a number of council people were out there. I want to thank everybody that got in the dunk tank, because it was a cold day. It was literally in the low 60s, so we should've got combat pay for being in the dunk tank, but... And National Night Out was located at the pavilion, and I thought it was a great location. It was a great event. We had a lot of people there. It's only gonna get bigger every year, so a lot of people worked hard on that, so thank you to everybody that worked so hard on that. Think it was a total success this year. Appeared on WJLB's morning show with Jed, took phone calls from the audience. Funny enough, most of them are out of towners asking me questions, but anyway. Met with the Hammond Parks, leadership of the Hammond Parks Department, Jim Talon and Councilman Mark Kalwinski regarding the pickleball courts at Pulaski Park. I know the councilman has also met with the Hammond Parks a couple times about expanding the pickleball presence in Pulaski Park. I think that's a great project. We also have pickleball expanded to Dowling Park, coexisting with the tennis courts in Dowling Park and inside the Gene Shepherd Center. They're converting it to a pickleball facility, so a lot of pickleball going on right now. Met with Ann Tyler and Juan Moreno regarding the RFP for the design consultant of the downtown Hammond train station. More on downtown Hammond. I know Councilman Zalinas is here by Zoom, but we picked our developer that's gonna design the train station. We know what it's gonna look like. A lot of good stuff going on down there. I know that one of the action items before the council has been pending. It's a resolution in regards to the demolition of the former site. We've been asking you to hold off on it, and we're asking you again to hold off on it, and I'm gonna tell you why. Dean Button, our city engineer, is working through the final details with Ton and Blank, who are Franciscan's contractor, regarding the specifications of the aggregate fill that they're gonna use to make sure that we're all comfortable with what's going on. Dean, our city engineer, is working with Ton and Blank. We are also working right now with Franciscan and PNW to ensure that the city has control of the frontage on Holman Avenue, where PNW's gonna build their new Impact Lab. So, we're working on the footprint for the Impact Lab. What's gonna be owned by PNW? What's gonna be owned by the city? We're working with the aggregate and Ton and Blank, and at the end of all this, the redevelopment commission will have control of that entire parcel outside of PNW's Impact Lab, which will be located basically in the northeast corner. The Impact Lab will be in that little quadrant in the northeast corner, and the southwest quadrant of the hospital site is where the parking garage was or is, and that parking garage is gonna stay. The rest of it will be demolished, and the redevelopment commission will be in control of it. So, it's pretty much agreed on by all actors in this, Franciscans, because we're working with them on the aggregate issue, PNW, and the city of Hammond, so... Once all that has been finalized and put into legal language, we're gonna present the resolution to you all and get it all effectuated, so. Update on police and fire negotiations. Fire, we really haven't, since the last time I'm here, we really haven't progressed. We're waiting right now on some information from the fire union about what they want to start moving forward with as far as pay is concerned. Police, we've been spending a lot of time on police, and I'm happy to say, I think I'm happy to say, we gave the police department our final offer. The city did. I've spoken to a number of you about this offer. It's a big proposal for a big pay raise to Hammond Police Department. Recruitment and retention has been our primary goal through this whole process. We are losing officers at an alarming rate. We want to stop losing officers, and we're having trouble recruiting new officers with our lower pay scales, and we want to fix that. The way to fix that is to sort of change the way we do the police department. So, I've been working with the police union. I've been in contact with city council people individually, and we sent the FOP our final offer. We asked them to vote on it. I don't think the FOP's thrilled that we asked them to vote on it, but we think the offer is good. We think it's very generous, and if they vote yes on it, we have work to do to make sure we can afford this. But if they vote yes on it, we will make sure this happens, and what we'll have is a very competitive salary for Hammond police officers. We'll stop losing officers to other departments, and we'll be a lot more attractive to potential police officers if these new salaries go into effect, okay? So, they, we should be hearing soon from the FOP on when they're gonna schedule that vote, but the ball is in their court. Teamsters operating engineers have not started yet, but I want to remind the council that about a year ago, we gave a mid-contract raise to the Teamsters that were qualified CDL drivers. That's a big percentage of the Teamsters. They got a mid-contract raise, which is, was very generous, and that'll be carried over into the next contract, meaning we already gave a pretty dang good raise to a lot of people that work in that department, so I don't think that we're gonna see anything like we're seeing with the police department, so. That's all I got. I know it's a lot. I appreciate you all letting me speak. I think I hit everything I needed to hit, and I'm available for questions if you have any.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor? Councilman Kowinski.
Evening, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Hey, Councilman.
I've been getting a few calls from residents pertaining to the senior discount that shows up on their water bill, and they're reporting back that they're being told that the city council took away the senior discount. Can you tell me how the discount happened to go away?
I have no idea.
Would Megan or Kevin have an idea? We haven't had an ordinance where we took it away.
I'll be honest, I don't think senior discounts are legal in Indiana. I'm pretty sure they're not legal in Indiana, and I'm not saying that there aren't cities and towns that do that, but we were informed a long time ago that senior discounts are not legal. So, what we do in Hammond to help our senior community is we send them $500 checks called the senior discount, which does come from the city council and the mayor, and we give that to our seniors to help them with bills like this. But, Councilman Mark, there's nothing the city council did to eliminate a senior discount. There's nothing that the mayor did. I don't believe there... If there was a senior discount, I don't think it was ever authorized.
Okay, so, I don't know if it was or wasn't ever authorized, but I'm getting reports that now they're affected, and when the garbage rate went up, it seemed like the senior discount went away at the same time, so their change is not $5, it's $10 from what it used to be. It's what they're complaining about, and so it's $120 a year difference for them on fixed income, so I just, I just don't know where... What's the explanation? What do I tell people? That we don't have it? We weren't supposed to have it, and now we still do the 500, or...
Hammond water is the lowest rate in the state of Indiana. You can tell them that with a calm look on your face, because it's true. We made sure that when we raised our rates, it was still the lowest in the state of Indiana, Councilman Mark, by a long shot, by the way. So, I don't know what you tell them. I don't think there ever was a senior discount on water.
All right.
Well, I mean, I don't know what you want me to say. We didn't anything. You did nothing as a councilman. I did nothing as a mayor to remove a senior discount. We set water rates higher, that's true, but we're still the lowest in the state of Indiana.
Okay, so nobody authorized removing a discount?
Not that I know of. Any other questions? I know last time I was here, there was a lot of questions about the water department. The water department's not here right now. Water department's over on, they have their own separate meetings. It's a separate board. I appoint five members to the board, and they run the water department. I'm not saying that I'm not aware, but it's like, the last time I was here, they were like, "You guys changed printers. What's going on?" I have no idea if they changed printers in the water department, because I don't supervise who prints water department bills, because that's the water department's job. I'm here on behalf of the city right now, and I could tell you, the water rates are the lowest in the state of Indiana, and for a long time, until we changed them, we were losing money. On every gallon of water we sold, we were losing money, so we fixed that, and there resulted in higher bills, for sure, okay? But you could check Hammond's water. You can compare it to every other water system in the state of Indiana, and you could check right now if I'm lying. I'm not. They are higher than they were before, though. I acknowledge that. And the garbage rates, by the way, we don't make a penny in the city off the garbage rates. We take garbage from every house, we put it into a big pile, and we take it to a landfill, and they charge us, and we have to pay that bill, and that bill has gone up, just like everybody else's bills have gone up. So, when that bill goes up, we go to the residents and we raise their bills so that it breaks even. So, if your bill went up, like my bill went up, it's because it's more expensive for us. That's just, everything's going up in price. I can't control that. I have to run the city. That's all I'm trying to do.
Anybody else have any questions for the mayor?
I'm here. Cool. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Accept the minutes on July 22nd, 2024. Be placed on file, please.
Second.
With a motion of second by Councilman Emerson, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, register of claims.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Vines.
I move for approval of claims beginning with claims dated July 17th, 2024, and ending with claims dated August 7th, 2024, claim number 6488 through claim number 6991 inclusive in the amount of $12,162,135.31. I so move.
Second.
With a motion of second by Councilman Warple, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Racos.
Yes. Approval of claims passes 9-0. Next up, public hearings. We have none. Communications. Any communications? For the public, Wednesday, August 14th, at the Hammond Sportsplex and Community Center, 5:30 to 7:00, NDOT will be discussing their Flex Road project to start next year. Project to improve traffic flow and safety along Indiana's busiest corridor. I happened to go to a meeting at Purdue last week. I had no idea what it was about. I guess they've been having these meetings for some time, but the last time was 2022, but they're, it's a public meeting. It's about how they're going to try to change the Borman Avenue and make it better and safer, and trying to give you some information. There they'll have displays in a public meeting, too.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you. Several weeks ago, there was a number of storms in Hammond, and the North Hammond-Pulaski Park area got hit really bad or hard with one, and electricity was out for almost three days. Approximately 600 to 700 homes lost a lot of their goods in their refrigerator and freezers, and I reached out to Congressman Frank Mervan to see if there was any assistance federally. Of course, there wasn't, but he did connect me with some resources that were helpful. The Food Bank of Northwest Indiana did a run and provided food for, I believe, approximately 70-plus households one day, when they came to the Pulaski Park parking lot. And I want to thank Victor Garcia from the Food Bank, and also Adrian Santos from the North Township trustee for the vouchers they provided for people to, who were eligible for that from the blackout, from the storm, which provided them with some aid to go to Strax and purchase some food, so thank you to those agencies for being helpful during the crisis.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
The Capitol Improvement Board met August 5th. Item 1, we talked about Columbia Avenue pavement corrings and with advanced engineering services in the amount of $7,360, pavement corrings needed for our future Columbia Avenue resurfacing project that we applied to NDOT for a community crossing matching grant in the third district. Item 2, Holman Avenue Phase 1 Change Order Number 22 for Courthouse Detour with Reith Riley, Reith Riley, God bless you.
Thank you.
Reith Riley Construction Company in the amount of $18,332.70. We needed to reroute traffic from Russell Street with the closure of Russell at Holman and the previously closed Russell to the east to accommodate the West Lake Extension in the second district. Item 3, Holman Avenue Phase 1 Change Order Number 23 for repair of Russell Street Sewer with Reith Riley Construction Company in the amount of $56,553.55. During construction, the contractor found an 18-inch sewer in poor condition that required replacement. The project is in the second district. Item 4, Holman Avenue Phase 1 Supplemental Construction Engineering Services with the American Structure Point in the amount of $59,979.48. The project was extended for a number of reasons, including AT&amp;T relocations, vaulted basements, and material delays. This allows for the engineer to continue project observation. The project is in the second district. And item 5, the last thing we dealt with, Marble Street Reconstruction Change Order Number 1 for removal and disposal of railroad ties found during construction of the road with milestone contractors north in the amount of $9,621.70. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I would like to announce the upcoming Community and Crime Watch meetings. Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will be Wednesday, August 14th at 1:00 PM. East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will be Tuesday, August 20th, 6:00 PM at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch will resume now that school is back in session. That will be Wednesday, September 4th, 6:30 PM at Edison School. Hasfield Crime Watch will meet Thursday, August 15th, 6:00 PM at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch again resumes now that school is back in session. That will be Friday, September 6th, 9:30 AM at Irving School. Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet September 12th, 6:30 PM at Calumet College. I would also like to, and before I move on, I would like to extend an invitation to all of our council people to attend some of these Crime Watch meetings. There are often questions that the residents have that the district, for instance, council person would know specifically, so I invite all of the council people to come and share in the information that is given to our neighborhoods. I also wanted to thank everyone who attended National Night Out. As the mayor said, it was a chilly evening. It was actually the wind that made it very chilly. We had nearly 600 people in attendance. We had police officers and firefighters from every one of our departments throughout the city. We also had several people from out of town. As far as Valpo, somebody came to our National Night Out. So, it was a very nice evening. It was an excellent opportunity for everyone who attended to get to know our police officers and firefighters. After all, they are the ones who are out there protecting us at night so we can sleep safely, and we know that they're there to protect us. So, thank you to all our police and fire who came and all of the council people who came. It was just a very nice community evening, and as I always say, community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports closed. Next up, ordinance, third final, third reading, final passage. We have none tonight. Number 10, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 24-15, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance creating a new fund, fund number 4439, to facilitate the 1% municipal food and beverage tax.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 24-15.
Second.
With a motion of second by Councilman Warple. Any discussion?
I don't think a committee meeting is necessary, but this is simply for us to establish a line item for the controller for the 1% food and beverage tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Zalinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Racos.
Yes. 24-15 passes on first and second reading, 9-0.
President Racos, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you. Next up, resolutions. We have none. Any new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I've been asked this question several times, and I guess I'll repeat it again. People want to know what's going on in Dowling Park. There is a sewer extension project that is a flood control project, actually, that is extending from Dowling Park over to the Kentucky Street Pumping Station. That's supposed to help alleviate the flooding over there, and about, I don't know, four years ago, I had a grid done in Dowling Park to help to try to alleviate some of the standing water after the floods, and when the bid came back, it was around $300,000 in order to get it leveled off and some pipes put underneath there. And then the pandemic hit, and you know what happened to the gaming money, but as part of this project, it's an 80/20 match with the Army Corps of Engineers. They pay 80. I think we pay 20, and we were able to save roughly $250,000 to $300,000 by keeping the dirt that they're digging out for the sewers on site. So, what we've decided to do was add to the sled hill, which I know the football players over there won't like that so much, because they run up and down, and it's got a nice slant to it now, but with the other dirt, we're gonna go ahead and level off what we would have been charged around $300,000, so that's, we're not only saving $300,000 by keeping the dirt on site, but we're also getting the $300,000 worth of work done for nothing, so. There's no buildings being built in there or anything like that. Once the ground gets leveled, we'll reseed it, and the football field slash soccer field is gonna be used again, and so will, from what the mayor said and what I've been talking to Mr. Talon from the Park Department, there are gonna be some pickleball courts going over by the tennis courts and inside the Gene Shepherd Center, so us old people will have something to do now and play pickleball rather than tennis. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Warple. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any new and unfinished business? The new and finished business is closed. Next up, public expression. First up, Lizette Martinez.
Good evening, counsel. How are you?
Good.
Just a simple thank you tonight. I'll start with Councilwoman Alexander for leading us in prayer and praying for our children and looking out for them. us in prayer and praying for our children and looking out for them. Very much appreciated. We're off to a fresh start, and today being the first day of school for our children, and so we're excited about that. And we also have a fresh start now that the mayor has hired on our former superintendent, Scott Miller, and so we're very excited and optimistic for the new year. I also want to thank you for asking questions because you're always asking them, and also extend that to my councilmen, 1st District Mark Kalwinski, always asking questions. That's very much appreciated. It's always great to see our representatives asking questions and representing us in every way. Thank you. Lastly, I wanted to thank you for being all ears with Ken Rosick's and TJ's and Jenna's efforts with the Briar Woods. I do consider that to be a very essential quality of life for us, and just the little green space that we have, we need to protect it. So any efforts that you guys make when it comes time to vote in the preservation of those woods would be really appreciated. And so that's all. It's a big thank you to all of you for all your efforts. I'm watching, you know, virtually. I know you guys don't usually think that the schools are linked up with the city, but there's always an opportunity for entities to work together, and we'll be seeing that happen more soon. And so thank you guys so much for asking the right questions and representing everyone in your districts and everything you do for our children and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ken Rosick.
Greetings, Council. Beautiful day today, yesterday. In determining what's best for our citizens, there needs to be an open discussion. In the process of Governor's Parkway Bridge, no meaningful discussion has really ever occurred. Numerous public comments have been completely ignored. Even today, we hear of meetings and discussions that go on behind closed doors. This is not good government. We must know something. We must know. We should, we deserve information. We deserve open discussion. Ever since I can remember, I was a proud Democrat. I believe my party represented the best approach in solving our problems. Why? Because of the values they hold concerning health care, education, employment, and our environment. No one who lives in a concrete jungle has a high quality of life. Numerous studies have clearly demonstrated this fact. The connection one feels with the world comes from the relationship to nature. Communities with abundant natural habitat have far better and more productive, happy lives. This is why so many cities throughout the country and the world are doing their best to preserve and enhance our urban forests. This is why my party seems to have gone astray. This is where my party seems to have gone astray. While other towns are doing their best towards preservation, the Democrats in Hammond are going in the exact opposite direction. You are all Democrats, every single one of you. Downstate, Indiana, Senator Braun, a Republican, just preserved hundreds of acres of forest. Last week, the Indianapolis Common Council voted unanimously 23 to 0 to purchase four parcels of land, hundreds of acres wide, from private owners to preserve them. Democrats and Republicans have bipartisan group doing the best for their city. The Democrats in this city want to destroy ours. Unanimous, 9-0, you voted to destroy our forest. You voted to lower our quality of life in Hessville, not out of necessity, but because we have, because we have a far better and less expensive and more effective option, one that would service the students and the parents. I hate to say it, but the Democratic actions in this city does not reflect the values I believe the party represents. Your votes to allow this to happen and your silence will go on your permanent political records, and for the more senior members, this will taint your legacies.
Thank you, Ken.
George Stoya, Robertsdale. With respect to the water bill discount and that you guys were discussing earlier with the mayor, at, according to my, these are rough notes. I hope it's still valid, a valid municipal code, but number 94.041, I don't have my glasses, so bear with me here. Collection from residential building units, the fees for collection and disposal of garbage and rubbish shall be the sum of $5. Granted, it may be amended, superseded, I don't know, but this is what I have. I don't know how old it is. Shall be $5 a month for each residential dwelling unit, except where the head of the household of the family dwelling unit, Jesus, I can't see, has submitted proof of age 65 years or older, or the head of household is and has been found to be disabled by the Social Security Administration, or that the head of the household is an unmarried widow. The sum shall be $3. So there was, in fact, a discount of some sort. There you have it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Joey Hines, and I've been working in environmental restoration for over five years. While I may not have, be a certified arborist, I have participated in numerous plantings, restoration projects. It's clear to me and likely anyone with a bit of experience that the current city planning for tree plantings and the proposed destruction of our natural areas are deeply flawed. Let's start with the recent tree plantings along Holman Avenue. These trees have been placed in shallow concrete beds with some position dangerously close to the roadway, where they are exposed to vehicle exhaust. This proximity not only harms the trees, but also increases the likelihood of damage to vehicles. On top of that, it's been reported that these, the plantings, the trees, didn't even remove the burlap bags before putting them in the ground. This oversight further reduces the chances of these trees surviving, making it a waste of our taxpayer money. Moreover, the planning for this city seems to disregard the value of our last remaining natural areas. The proposed bridge rerouting the parish crossing would destroy vital green space. This isn't just an environmental concern, it's a community's concern. Natural areas are irreplaceable. Once they're gone, you can't put the toothpaste back in the tooth bottle. Natural, they provide numerous benefits from improving air quality, flood control, and offering recreational spaces for residents. The city's approach as it stands reflects poor planning and a lack of foresight. It's frustrating to see our tax dollars spent on projects that are doomed to fail, or worse, that threaten the very green spaces we should be preserving. I also have reports of trees behind the Hammond School not being mounded properly, and they are also not being watered. There are some trees that were planted under power We deserve a city that values long-term account of sustainability over short-term, poorly thought-out projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jenna. So I prepared a short speech for you guys today regarding the history of our area. Recently, I had a very interesting conversation with a local geologist who has studied and researched the history of our area for decades. I learned a lot, and I wanted to share some of that with you guys. I was sent this official geographical, geographical map and was, and given it to you for context. The map that sits in front of you is the same map that is used by local scientists. Thousands of years ago, as Lake Michigan was receding, shorelines were formed. There were three ancient shorelines formed. However, even though natural and man-made processes have altered them, portions of these ancient shorelines can still be recognized. If you take a look at the map in front of you, the portion highlighted in yellow is part of the dune sand deposits that formed approximately 4,700 years ago. These dunes were formed as wind picked up and deposited sand into dunes. Before the development of our city, as well as surrounding cities, our land was comprised of sand and sandridges, sand dunes and sandridges, excuse me. As refineries, factories, and mills expanded, more and more people sought to work and live in these, in this developing area. With the development and creation of homes, apartments, schools, et cetera, these sand dunes and ridges had to be leveled out. A lot of the sand in the area was mined and sold. It has been said that after the natural creation of the shorelines and before the oil refineries, nature flourished. There were all kinds of birds, thousands of frogs, wild berries, and forested areas. Although the surrounding areas have been developed, the Briar East Woods is part of that abundant nature that once existed. The Briar East Woods is marked on the map, and as you can see, they are part of the ancient dune shoreline, which is actually the same shoreline that stretches into the beaches in Gary, all the way down to the Indiana dunes, beaches, and parks. The Briar East Woods is the last unprotected remnant of the high, the high-tallest and dunes and are part of, and are extremely important, and an extremely important part of our history. These woods remind us all of the beauty and land's natural evolution, and for that reason alone, I believe they are worth saving. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Next up, Anthony Diaz.
Evening, Council. 5719 Holman Avenue, first day of school. And we're here, Mr. Miller is here. Thank you for showing up. Hopefully, the buses are running and kids don't have to go into the train. You know, in Hessville, when they're building a bridge, we talk about a mile-long bridge or sections of bridge. I know in Munster, they do have an underpass on Broadmoor. Now, this has been serving the community for years under the Monon tracks, and now it's going to be the South Shore tracks. They can go right underneath. I don't know why we haven't approached that instead of listening to our so-called surveyors and, and our technical people that know about bridges. It's not a bridge issue. It's underneath. I mean, it's always been. It's common sense. I don't, I don't know why you'd want to destroy the land. Briar Woods has been, always been a part of Hessville. It's just a question. I don't know. People are wondering what's going on with Harrison Park. I haven't got any answers from my councilmen. No plans, no, maybe there are plans, but again, whatever's in the dark always comes to the light, and we'll find that out. We'll find that out. So it's just, it's, it's amazing that my, my street on Webb Street got done in a week. It was held up for eight, eight months with, with construction. I couldn't get in my parking lot, but I paid $500 more in taxes this year, but it just got done recently. You know why? Because we had pilgrimage from Chicago coming. Didn't want to be embarrassed with the infrastructure and how it looks. It's sad. It looked terrible. Harrison Park looks terrible. There's no, there's no pond. There's no fishing, anything like that for the kids anymore because you got to go to the sportsplex and pay money to go play. That's how it is. And now we got a food and beverage tax for the civilian, South Shore Station, sportsplex, none of this citizens have ever asked for. This is all made up with you guys, with your big people that want to build and keep on building concrete, concrete, pay paradise, put up another parking lot. And taxes went up, $500, but it's not, doesn't need to do anything for me. My park is still looking like, it's terrible. No plans, no plans. I haven't heard anything. A water discount. I have my constituents, people ask me all the time, water, why is it going up so much? I thought it was a senior discount. This gentleman brought that up. I don't know what happened to it. Why did it go up so much? Of course, he's not having any more kids. I mean, people are not, you know, having any more babies or whatever. And the seniors, there's no more people taking, why does it go up so much? 15 bucks. Ours has gone up. The trees on Holman, which a guy mentioned, yeah, we had a lot of people tell me, brother, why are the trees so close to Holman? Well, it's a plan. It was a plan that was suckered by City Hammond to do something with Holman Avenue and, and make it walkable. And I understand. It's, it's a plan. Hopefully, in 10 years, something like that, it would, it'd catch on, you know, businesses and the properties down there need to be improved. We knocked enough buildings down, and I don't see that coming back. We do have vacant land, but.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you. And Mr. Miller, I'll be here all the time to talk to you and put my comments out. Appreciate it.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.